I'm staring. Let the record show that this is our regular city council meeting held on August 16th. All members of council are present that can be with the exception of Mayor O'Neil. Ryan Richard is joining us by phone and the press has been duly notified. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence and turn your mic on, Gus.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to make a motion that we table items six, I'd like to get a motion that we table items six B and six C until a later date at the request of the petitioner.
I'd like to make a motion to table items six C and six D.
B.
E. B and C, sorry, sorry, B and C.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heather Overman. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 It's unanimous. All right, so tonight, our first item on the agenda is a special presentation to recognize our July 4th parade winners. Katie Brazostewitz, our events manager, will come up.
Just wanted to take a minute and thank you all for participating in this year's T K Fourth of July Land Parade. On behalf of our judges, the Women's Club of T K and all of the businesses that donated for the event, I'm going to present our first place golf cart prize winners. On behalf of Carolina Golf Cars, you are getting a Bazooka speaker with free installation and that is going to the Vicker family. Are you guys here tonight? They said they were coming, so if they do, we have it here for you. And then I'd also like to present our first place winner for the Float Parade entry and that is the Carolina Showski team. So you guys can come up and I have your prizes. You guys won a complimentary Windjammer Park rental along with a $200 gift certificate to Harris Teeter and a $100 gift certificate to the Goat Boater as well. So, thank you to everyone that donated the prizes and congratulations. And if you guys will just stand up here for a quick minute altogether, we'd like to get a picture. Thank you.
The ladies in the back need to move up front. Sorry, but come on, come on. Good job. That's hard work.
And on behalf of the Carolina Showski team, we appreciate everything that the city does for us, Charlie and Joey and everybody for allowing us to participate in Windjammer Park and we take that very seriously. We had 11 shows this year and had super successful year, really. Very thrilled. We just finished our season Friday, but thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item two on the agenda is a public hearing on our fiscal year 2021, 2022 budgets. And I introduce City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Machunas, members of council. Very similar to what I showed last month during budget presentation, but just want to go through all the, I'll go through all the funds and at the end be happy to answer any questions. So total, looking at your funds, you've had a 10% overall increase. A lot of that is from increase in the tax base as well as the increase in T CUD customers is where you're seeing a lot of those things happening. We've also are experiencing a very nice uptick in our building permits and business license revenues. Those are, those are really, really trending well this year. Conversations with the builders here in town, we expect more of the same next year for sure. So in your general fund, we are requesting a budget of $13 million, $73,380. Beach and Swim Center, $163,402. In our utility department, T CUD, $6 million, 151,055. In Stormwater, $597,000. And our events and tourism, $171,500. Excuse me, and in our hospitality tax fund, $345,000. So your total for all funds coming in at $20 million, 501,338. For general fund, you can see the taxes make up a little over 56% of our revenue and that is your, your real and your personal property. Taxes are license fines and fees, the bulk of that is your franchise fees, your business license fees, things of that nature, making up a little, little more than 37% of your budget. Our rec revenue is your next one and so on, but ultimately the bulk of our revenue coming from, from the tax base. Just some trend, trend data for you. We've seen about 19, about a 19% increase in tax revenues from 2019 through what we're projecting for this coming year, all of which without a millage increase. And that, that comes from both our business growth as well as our residential growth that has been coming in. Your license fines and fees, trim revenue, you can see we did take a dip last year, but overall you've had about an 18% increase in revenues from 2019 to 2022 and we really haven't done any fee increases in, in those areas as far as your, your business license fees, your permit fees and things of that nature. No substantial fee increases through theirs over that time, so. And again, it's good to see us getting, moving back up in the right direction there and we anticipate that continuing forward next year and in the, in the years to come. Just to go through your general fund departments, and I'll read these out loud because I realize it may be a little difficult to see on the screen, but your proposed budget for municipal council at $51,911. You've got a municipal court expense of $244,025. Admin expense at $802,158. Your development services at $460,080. Public works at $1 million, $7,258. Public, excuse me, police expense at $3 million, $313,912. Your fire expense at $2 million, $202,273. Your parks and recreation expense of $805,702. And then your non-departmental expense, which is where your trash recycle fees, your bond expenses, things of that nature are at $4 million, 186,061. And that, those are all of your, your department, so to speak, expenses in your general fund. So just looking at it, your, your non-departmental expense, obviously with having your bond payments there, that's, that is where the, the bulk of your expenses are. You're right at a little over $800,000 in trash and recycle fees at this point. So that, that's where your big ticket items are. As I explained, each year, your, your public safety, both your police and your fire are generally going to make up your, your largest expense items, for sure, followed by public works and then parks and recreation with council coming in at less than 1% there at the bottom. So let's talk through a couple of the highlights, if you will, for the general fund. As stated previously, no tax, no tax increase is being proposed by staff on these budgets. Based on the, the survey that we conducted and concluded last week, there is a slight increase on the recycle fee. You had about a 22% respondent on the survey as far as number of households and had about 84, 85% vote in the affirmative that they would like to keep the curbside service and pay the additional fee. So that is what the budget reflects. Obviously, when we get to that portion of the meeting, we can have more discussion on that as far as if council wants to go a different route. But because of the survey results, we have included that, that 30 cents per house per month fee in there. We do, we are including one new specialized patrol officer that will be also a K-9 unit is in there, three new firefighters, as we discussed, both during budget workshop and was explained, as I explained during the presentation last month. That could grow to six firefighters depending on the SAFER grant. We will not hire these three new ones until we've gone through the SAFER grant process, so you're looking at probably a May-June timeframe before those would come on board, whether it be the three or the six. Two new employees in parks and recreation plus additional seasonal part-time staff, still envisioning trying to staff Windjammer with the attendant like we did. And then the other seasonal part-timers coming on towards the tail end of the fiscal year as we're able to open Cotaba Park. If we're delayed because we keep getting weather like this, obviously we won't be bringing those seasonal part-timers on until the beginning of the next fiscal year, so. Full-time municipal judge, as we've discussed, and they, let's see, Donna Dorado will officially begin that position on August 26th. Three new vehicles in PD, two of them are replacement vehicles and then one new for the, for the K-9 unit, two new vehicles in parks and recreation. And then the fun stuff, the really, really cool stuff. Sidewalk on Windward Drive from T K Drive down to the park, excited to get that one started. That's probably a summer of 2022 project. Really need to get through the spring sports seasons before, before we take that on since we'll still be heavily utilizing Runde at that point. The trail from Beach Club Trail to Stonecrest Boulevard, envision funding for that. Well, as, once budgets are approved, we'll move to engineering and then get that out for bid so that we can try to get that one started as weather permits. And then remodeling the exterior of the Parks and Rec Office as well as paving that parking lot and connecting that parking lot to City Hall. Not sure of the timing on that, but I would imagine probably sometime this winter, probably Q2 of the fiscal year, once we get it out for bid and things of that nature, so. Those are your budget highlights for the general fund. Moving into the Beach and Swim Center, we're looking at a budget of $163,402 as stated We, we had a good year this year and we've got some, some cool things we're envisioning for next year. One of the things that we're, we're looking at especially with, I think, our ARP money on or about September 17th, when we should start getting that, remodeling some of that facility using some, we've got, able to capture about $58,000 in lost revenue from that facility that we can, we can get from ARP. And with that, we're, we are looking, I think, councilman, council member Overman and Dash had pitched the idea of expanding that concession stand, so we've already started doing some exploratory stuff there. Think we've got an idea to be able to create more of a resort type atmosphere out of that. Yeah, so we're, we're excited about the, the upcoming pool contract or pool year, but we will be bidding out the pool contract again for the management services this fall. Your, your highlights that we've got in the budget for now are a new pump for the baby pool. It works, but it, we don't have, can't get parts for that anymore, so when it breaks, it's done. So we were going to look to proactively change that out over the winter. Repairs to the concrete deck, no fee increase. And then, as I said, potentially remodeling a concession stand to provide a resort style service there. So those are your highlights for that Beach and Swim Center. Once again, that, that fund has remained tax neutral by the skin of its teeth, but it is still plugging along and we're, we're excited about that. Utility department. You can see that has, that has had a steady climb, most of which is due to increased number of customers. And you're looking at a budget of $6 million, 151,055 for the coming fiscal year. A few of the highlights there, no increase on the water rate this year and this should be from what our sources with City of Rock Hill have told us, this should be the last increase we have to pass through on sewer. And Bob, that was?
14 cents per thousand?
14 cents per thousand gallons and that is included in your fee schedule for consideration later on in this meeting. The series over the last several years of rate increases, both from water and from sewer, have been because of the Rock Hills need to increase capacity, both at their water treatment plant and the sewer treatment plant because of the increased number of customers from cities like us, Town of Fort Mill, York County and some of the other folks that they serve. So it's, it is what it is. Nobody ever likes to increase the fees and we're just passing through what's coming along to us. Those, those rates actually started back July 1. We've been able to, through the budget, be able to absorb that and we'll be able to absorb that until October. So those rates would not go in until, until October. And then also included in there is the purchase of a utility terrain vehicle and a crane lift attachment for a service truck and just being able to fund those with cash and not have to finance either one of those. So those are your, your utility highlights for that budget. Stormwater, again, that continues to climb. That's based on the number of CEUs, or ERUs, I'm sorry, ERUs, equivalent residential units. Each house pays, is equated at 3,500 square feet, which is an ERU, and they pay $108 per year and that is on their tax bills. The commercial folks pay per ERU, so for every 3,500 square feet of impervious surface, they are paying $108. So that includes their rooftop, their parking lot, their, their sidewalks and things of that nature. So that has continued to climb at a modest rate, so you're looking at a budget of $597,000 envisioned for next year. With that, again, no fee increase, staying at the 108 for the year per how, per ERU. And the good thing, thank you, council, for, for understanding the need there and pushing to, for us to find ways to get these done, but getting a new front end loader and a new dump truck that will help us, especially in times like today when we're running around trying to pick up all the downed trees and limbs and things of that nature, be able to do that more expeditiously. And it also includes an additional, not a replacement, but an additional loose leaf truck, vac truck. So it'll help us stay on schedule, it'll take some of the wear and tear off of the one that we've got now that we're having to go out into Lakewood and Sretin Point areas a little more frequently as those trees continue to mature. It'll help us be able to provide that, that quality service for residents during those, during those times of the year. Your events and your H-tax. So here's your H-tax trend. This, this is a great trend. You're looking at a proposed budget of $345,000. This year, we had budgeted for the 278. We will exceed that number by probably about 20,000.
Ever take?
More?
Probably a little more.
Our restaurants and whatnot that provide the food and beverages have done very, very well. Yeah, I, we've said it before, but I'll, I'll say it again, that is largely in part due to our residents supporting those, those entities, those businesses through the pandemic, the shutdowns. Every one of those restaurants that were open in February of 2020 are still open today. So that's, that's a great thing and that's a testament to our residents supporting the local business. So glad to see the H-tax trend continuing to grow and we expect big things through next year. Your events and H-tax highlights, we increased the anticipated cost to July 4th due to next year being our, our 40th anniversary of the city. We're also revamping the city website. You've got about a 50,000, you've got a $50,000 transfer envisioned from H-Tax to the Cotaba Park Fund to help offset those expenses as, as those bond payments come due. And it also has the final payment on the lights at Runde Park. So those are your budget highlights and all of your funds. Are there any questions?
All right, so that would be the time where we would have public comments, but it appears that no one signed up for public comments, so we will move to the next agenda item, which would be approval of minutes. Council, you've all received the minutes from our regular meeting held on July 12th of 2021. Are there any additions, deletions, deletions or changes?
None.
Hearing none, the minutes stand as submitted. Next item is committee reports. The first one would be Economic Development Commission, but they didn't meet because they weren't going to have a quorum, so there will be none. Planning Commission is next. Would that be you, Chris, or Alicia?
So I think it's both of us.
That would be Chris and Alicia. And by the way, nobody congratulated me on pronouncing Katie's last name correctly. I think I did it exemplary.
Did he get it right? Did he get it right?
No.
I didn't think so. I was like, did you see the look she gave you when he said it? I was like...
I pronounced it the way it was given to me.
Nice guy.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and just give a brief overview of the Planning Commission meeting and then call Chairman and Co-Chairman, I don't know if you both are coming up, to, to talk about some recommendations they'd like to present to City Council that we'll be seeing at our next council meeting. But the Planning Commission met on, let's see, it was last Monday, I believe, August 9th and they did have some votes that, or some recommendations that they took on the zoning for the Segal property, although that was one of the items that we tabled this evening, so more to come there. They also approved sending the stormwater recommendations to City Council in which we will get briefed on here shortly. And I will just say a special thanks to Matt DeWitt for all of his help on that. Matt is our in-house stormwater expert and so we greatly appreciate his expertise on, on this board, especially when talking about stormwater. They also approved the final plan for Trinity Phase Four and they begun discussions and benchmarking activity on accessory dwelling units. This was taken up last in 2017 and there's a push to take it up again, so maybe you can talk a little bit about accessory dwelling units as well when you, you come up if you'd like. So with that, our, the next regular meeting will be Monday, September 13th. They're here in this room, they start at 6:30. Certainly welcome anyone to come and participate in those and provide input. They will be revisiting the current year 2021 work plan and certainly begin addressing some of the other items on their list that will be up next for discussion. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chairman Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and members of council. We wanted to give you a quick brief and I don't think we have it electronically for the crowd, right? But it'll be on the agenda for next month and I wanted to kind of tee this up and let Matt talk through some of the details. So back at the beginning of this year, council asked the Planning Commission to go look at things we could do to help better protect the Cotaba River watershed in the city from excessive stormwater runoff and potential damage from developments and things like that. And so we've had a project going now for about six months where we did that. And we kind of went through the same process that we did for Bike Ped Plan, if you will. We came up with a number of different items, tried to put some metrics against them, we kind of ranked them. We did take a couple off the table because we didn't feel they really met the, the needs of the city very well. But we did come up with some, I think, 10 different things, maybe, maybe nine-ish. We kind of separated them into ordinance changes, things that would actually have to go through public hearing and codification, things like that, as well as policy changes, things that the city would just do business differently, perhaps with developers and how they go about their business, both short-term and some of these are relatively long-term. So this is an aspirational list. Some of these are really hard, some of them will have, would have some legal challenges and some of them have some significant costs to them, but all of them generally contribute to improving how we protect the watershed. So with that, I'll let Matt kind of talk you through and if you have any specific questions, Matt can talk to that. But like I said, I think this is formally going to be in your agenda next month for your consideration, so I'll let Matt DeWitt.
Can I hold that?
You may.
Thank you. Because, because I don't have a copy. First, thank you, members of council, for, for letting us speak to this. It has been a long time coming and I'm glad we're, we're finally getting to, to present in front of you. For the record, I am, I am not a stormwater engineer. I am an environmental planner in, in my day job and so I have, I have a lot of experience with, with water, stormwater permitting and environmental impacts. And so, so that's my background. I am not an engineer, need to make sure to go on record with that. So as, as we started this, everybody in the Planning Commission started reading through ordinances and we found several that, that had some language that we thought we may be able to revise, that, that could assist with, with some small, some small improvements. There is an ordinance here that you see in, in Chapter 44, Article One, that would require that the developers perform a, a downwater analysis of what their project's going to do. Currently, it is not mandatory, it is, it is done on a, on a case-by-case basis and, and from what I understand, it's rarely done. And so that is something that would add some costs to the developer, but we may be able to, to, to have more data going forward if we require those, those, that downstream analysis. You'll see the upside and the downside, I don't need to read all of this to you, I'm more here to, to kind of explain it to you on a high level, but if you have any questions, please, please stop me from rambling. The second item is simply to change the, the stormwater criteria from a 10-year to a 20-year. What that essentially does is it makes bigger ponds. So I think we're all pretty familiar with the Stonecrest Pond at the, at the bottom of the hill. That is one that has been targeted a lot lately from, from, from a review standpoint. If we were to change, if the city were to change those requirements, essentially that pond would get a lot bigger and it would hold a lot more water when we have these major events. And, and as we all know, the, the storms are getting more severe, we're getting more of those, that, that 20-year storm event more frequently. So that, that would, obviously it would, it would have less developable land for the developers, so they may not like it, but it is another consideration. A couple of simple things, creating more open space. So as stormwater moves across barren land, it moves a lot faster. The water coming off, if it's moving faster, it does more damage. It's, it's, it's that simple. So there is a volume component, there is a speed component. If we can create more open space, more green space, wider buffers on, on our streams, essentially that is just, that is, that is more pervious surface for that water to soak in before it hits those channels. When the water gets into the channel and it's, and it's moving quickly, it does a lot more damage and a lot more erosion. So those are the major ordinances changes that we, that we looked at. Any questions about those before I, before I keep rambling? I don't mean to lecture, I'm not a teacher. Okay, all right. So moving on to, to policy changes, one of the things that, that we've seen frequently, full disclosure, I do mostly transportation projects. And so one of the things that we've seen be beneficial in our transportation projects is doing bathymetric surveys. And what that is, is essentially a survey of the underwater part of the lake. So it, it gives you, it gives you that bowl appearance with a water level. And we worked on a project on Lake Wiley and there was a lot of concern over a cove there and some sediment that had entered the cove from previous developments and, and the landowners were concerning about the roadway project increasing that or, or making it worse. So what we did was we, we did a bathymetric survey and we got a, the topo of the lake. And then we did another one a year before construction and that gave us a baseline of how much sediment is naturally going into that area of, of the cove. And then we were going to, and it hasn't been finished yet, but at the end of construction, they will do another survey and compare it on a timeline to see if the amount of sediment that has come into that cove is, is naturally occurring or if the project increased that. From that point, the contractor would be, then be responsible for dredging any of the sediment that, that was not natural, if that makes sense. So the recommendation is to conduct some of these surveys in our more sensitive coves. The Nivens Creek Coves, a lot of those are seemingly increasing faster from, from what residents are saying. And so if we, if we, if we do some surveys, that will give us a baseline for what that cove looks like now. It's not going to correct what's already happened, but we can, we can monitor it and then we can start making decisions. But right now, we don't know what's happening. We think we know what's happening and we, and we, we think it's happening at a greater rate, but we just don't have any data. So with actual phys, with, with documented data, we can go to those agencies and show them that data and that may help us kind of fight that fight. data, and that may help us kind of fight that fight. If you will. One of the, along that same line is to either require or increase some liquidated damages to anybody that does put sediment into the coves. Right now, that is, it's a de-hec issue. De-hec comes out, and in most cases, there's a lot of finger pointing, and nobody can really say who's at fault. A lot of people think it's natural, some people say it's the contractor, all of those sorts of things. So if we require that anybody that's building, there's a liquidated damages line item in their contract, that if we have the data that shows that they increase the sediment at a greater rate, then there's a fine for that. That money could then, at least in our recommendation, be used towards mitigating or rectifying some of the issues that have been caused. So we could create a fund with that money and then use it for dredging or for other improvements. All right, restoration of eroding streams. You probably heard about this some already. This is somewhat of a nuclear option because of the price that goes along with it. But that is taking a channelized stream that has, you know, more vertical banks, raising that stream up, essentially creating a new channel on the floodplain. So in biological terms, you just, you want to get that water out and spreading out. That slows it down, and it increases the area of where that water can go. So if you keep it channelized, it's going to keep eroding and keep getting deeper and deeper, and that's where all that sediment comes from. So restoring the stream is essentially creating a new channel up on the top of the floodplain, and that requires land ownership, or at least easement in that area. So if we were to target a stream that needed to be restored, we would need to, the city would need to own that, I keep saying "we," but the city would need to either have easements or own that property in order to be able to modify that stream. And those projects are just, I think it was, I think we were looking at half a million dollars for a half-mile stretch, if I remember right. So those are expensive projects. And then finally, at least on the policy changes, is just to, as a city, align with more of a preservation-conservation policy. And a lot of cities and towns in South Carolina are starting to do it. One of the examples we looked at was the town of Hilton Head. Any town, a parcel of land comes up, and the town of Hilton Head, the town buys it, and they put it into conservation. And essentially, all that's doing is going back to having more open space, more green space, having more pervious surface rather than impervious surface. And finally, we had a list. There are a few that we did review and not recommend. We will present those at the next meeting.
Matt, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
So when you guys were looking at all of this, were you looking at other municipalities within the state, within other states? I know you have, obviously, firsthand knowledge, but I'm curious to know what other areas in our state are doing things like this, mainly because I think all of these things are awesome, but we're towards the near end of our development, not the beginning. So had this been put into place 10 years ago, I think we could have saved ourselves a lot of heartache. But, and I'm not saying we shouldn't still do some of these things now. But, you know, what are you seeing out there?
So some of the ordinance changes that we looked at are in line with York County. Some of them, we are a little bit behind on what York County and other neighboring cities are doing. And I think that was, if I remember correctly, that was the...
The 40% versus 35%?
Yes, the new development and the increase in buffer stream widths, that is also something that other neighboring communities are doing. Going up to a 20-year pond versus a 10-year pond, I think that is something that, well, I don't know, I don't personally know of any other town that's doing that yet, but it's something that we could consider doing. As far as the policy changes goes, some of this, most of this is based on kind of our experience, and it's not necessarily what maybe cities are doing, but in the environmental realm, it's what's being promoted. And as I mentioned, some of the towns are buying up land, creating green belts. Green belts aren't anything new, but trying to create a buffer around the city to have some protection. And I totally recognize we're nearing the end of that. But as things start to redevelop, we could purchase those. And again, I say "we," and I apologize for my normal lingo. So it wasn't specific to any particular community, so it was more of just an overall look at anything that we can do. This is more of a shotgun approach.
Thank you for doing this.
Based, I mean, based on the recommendations that you're making, if councils so choose to, chose to put those in place, I mean, you're right about de-hec. It just turns into a whole lot of finger pointing, and then nothing happens. But, I mean, it's pretty clear the way I'm reading, if those recommendations are put in place, and I know that we can have stricter ordinances and rules than what the state has. It's not just that you would have to prove that the sediment came from the development. You're talking simply the amount of, the velocity of the water coming from the cleared watershed, whatever damage it causes, could go back against the developer? Is that what you're saying?
Could. That's what liquidated damages, that's what I was referring to with that, that if, so de-hec requires that you have 80% trap of suspended solids in the water. If we could, if we did bathymetric surveys, if there was a way that we could provide data showing that they are not trapping 80%, then we could enforce liquidated damages. Now, that gets into a legal matter, and they may have a different opinion of that. This is just coming from my opinion on, or Planning Commission's opinion, on what I've seen in the, again, in the private world. Liquidated damages are a standard component of a contract for any contractor that's working on a roadway project, whether they're delayed in time, or whether they have impacts that they're not supposed to have. All of those sorts of things could be enforced. But yes, that's what I was referring to.
I vote yes.
And you know as well as anybody that there is, it is very difficult to prove, and it's even more difficult to get an agency to really condemn a contractor. It's just, it's so difficult. But this could, if nothing else, it could scare contractors into knowing that there are ramifications if they continue to dump into the lake.
You're preaching to the choir.
Matt, what's the approximate, like, cost for the bathymetric surveys?
So...
I mean, range estimate?
Right. The, to do one is probably somewhere in the $3,500 to $5,000 range to do one cove.
Okay.
And we have, I have some of those numbers a little bit more in detail, and I'll prepare that for you next time. It's based on an area, and also the technology. Some surveyors will just use canoes and rods, which in the Nivens Creek area would be all they needed, and some float mechanical sonar little boats that can get a better image of it. So it all depends, but it's basically based on the area that you need to survey.
Okay.
I think what we were, if I remember correctly, we were thinking that we could do three to five, I keep saying "we," the city could do three to five a year, three to five coves, if they could budget, you know, $10,000 to $15,000 a year to it, and keep that on file. You know, do three to five one year, three to five the next year, kind of put them on a three- to five-year rotation as well, so that you're getting the information continuously, and your budget is kind of staying consistent year to year.
That's good. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Matt.
All right.
Chris, Alicia.
All of you. Good stuff.
All right. Next up, you haven't gone.
No.
Next up is Heather with TK Forever.
Okay, so TK Forever met on August 2nd. The main topic was Taste of York County, which will be Friday, October 1st. Kudos to Katie B., we'll just leave it at that.
Oh, come on.
No, not trying, not trying it. Who has put a lot of effort to this. The tickets went on sale today, so we have both general admission and VIP. You come, you taste a bunch of different restaurants from all over York County. There's live music. We have, if you're doing the VIP, we have a chef doing a live presentation. We have a comedy person coming this time, so it was a lot of fun last time. If you haven't bought your tickets, make sure you do so. We also talked, oh, also, if you are a business or a local business owner, and you would like to donate some items to our silent auction, that would be amazing, too. We will take anything and everything you got to offer us.
Or crafter? Take crafts?
Crafts?
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, maybe.
Lots of crackers.
Okay.
See? I'm just getting some ideas.
Sure, we'll take what we can get. Joseph is doing drone footage each week of Cotabro Park and the progress, so they have been posting those to Facebook. If you see that, you can kind of watch the progress, but the goal is to kind of look at that over time, so we can have a time lapse, you know, a year and a half, or a little, no, not a year and a half, a year from now. And then Liz Douda came. She was our resident who attended our meeting, and there was some discussion on the skate park and the progress there, and trying to determine a location and discussion for next time to be continued of how we're going to do some funding and things like that. So that was the wrap-up of TK Forever. And I don't know what our next meeting is, because we haven't scheduled it yet. That's it.
Thank you very much. All right, next up would be Item 6A, consideration of an encroachment agreement for 2022 Lake Forest Drive. Mr. Joe Rasm approached City Council a couple months ago requesting permission to use a portion of city property that is adjacent to his property for the purpose of installing a swimming pool. The reason for the request was to avoid having to take down more trees in a different area on his property. The encroachment agreement we are considering tonight would provide for this. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Could I ask for a motion?
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council, motion to approve an encroachment agreement for 2022 Lake Forest Drive and authorize the city manager to execute said agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
You're late, Ryan.
Damn it.
I have a motion by Councilperson Overman, and a second by Councilperson Dash. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Ryan.
Nice try, man.
Heather, give me a chance next time.
It's all you, buddy. All you. You got the next one.
Okay, we tabled 6B and 6C. Stop and move forward. 6D is a consideration of a reduction for the letter of credit and performance, labor and materials surety agreement for Trinity Townhomes Phase 1. This is a reduction of the first letter of credit approved by City Council for Phase 1 of the Trinity Townhomes. All work has been completed except for the final lift of asphalt for the streets contained in Phase 1. The LOC is being reduced from $160,577.50 to $20,767.50. The city's engineer has issued a concurrence letter agreeing the remaining funds are sufficient to cover the cost of the remaining work to be performed. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Could I have a motion, please?
Mayor members, Mayor Protem and members of council, motion to approve a reduction of the letter of credit and performance, labor and materials surety agreement for Trinity Townhomes Phase 1, contingent upon receipt of the revised LOC in the form and substance suitable to the city attorney, and authorize the city manager to execute said PLM surety agreement.
Do we have a second, Ryan? Oh, Ryan came in quick on that one. Thank you, councilman. All right, we have a motion and a second by Ryan Richard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, again. Item 6E, new business. Consideration of a letter of credit and performance, labor and materials...
No, that's what we just did. You need to add.
That is not what we just did.
No, it's not?
And I think I pronounced her name right, too, but anyway, it's a whole nother story. It's her name, she can have it, I apologize. Consideration of a letter of credit and performance, labor and materials surety agreement for Trinity Townhomes Phase 4. This is a new letter of credit request suitable to cover the cost of some of the infrastructure to be installed for the fourth and final phase of the Trinity Townhomes project. The letter of credit request is for the amount of $34,376.25. The city's engineer has issued a concurrence letter agreeing the requested funds are sufficient to cover the cost of the remaining work to be performed. Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay.
Good.
Motion to approve the letter of credit and performance, labor and materials surety agreement for Trinity Townhomes Phase 4, contingent upon receipt of the LOC in the form and substance suitable to the city attorney, and authorize the city manager to execute said PLM surety agreement.
Ryan? Do we have a second?
Again, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. All right.
6F.
6F. New business. Introduction and first reading of an ordinance to provide for the budgets of the city of TK for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022, to provide for the receipt and expenditure of funds and other matters related heretofore. This is the first reading of an ordinance necessary to set the budgets for the fiscal year 2021 to 2022 that were presented by the city manager during the required public hearing. There is no millage increase included in the coming fiscal year. Any questions or comments on the budget? First reading. Do I have a motion?
Mayor Protem and members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to provide for the budgets of the city of TK for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022, to provide for the receipt and expenditure of funds and other matters related heretofore.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Overman. All in favor for this best budget we've ever had, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. Okay. That's all the new business and old business. Can I move forward to the city manager's report? Mr. Fundenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Machunas. Members of council, once again, thank you to all of you and to staff, many of whom are here tonight, for the hard work and dedication on the upcoming budgets, as Mr. Machunas alluded to. Definitely the best budget that I've seen in TK in 20 years. Fantastic, a lot of exciting things. We're ready for October 1, get here so we can get going on it, for sure. Our next Model A concert will be this weekend, August 21st, at Runney Park, with the Red Dirt Road Revival as the featured artists. Been getting a lot of calls and emails asking us what type of band that is. It is not a classical music band. Pretty certain they're country. That's about all you're going to hear on the Red Dirt Road. So DJ starts at 6:00, staff has lined up some great food trucks. Hopefully, this rain gets out of here, and it knocks the humidity down, and it's a great night. So we're excited about that concert. Hope everybody had an awesome first day of school. We've got a lot of bikers and walkers back at it again around the city, going to and from school. And we're also back to school traffic congestion. So just everybody take a deep breath, show a little grace, and leave a few minutes earlier than you have been for the past two months, and everything will be okay. Also, just be mindful of the crosswalks in and around your neighborhood, and just keep an eye for the little ones. Speaking of crosswalks, SC DOT contractors started on the Heron Harbor Crosswalk today by boring under the road. It appears they may complete sometime in 2021, because what they did today, you're not going to see them again for a few more weeks before they come back out. So sometime in 2021, they'll get it done. Maybe we can light it up for Christmas. That's the end of my report. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor Protem.
All right, council comments? Let's start with Alicia Dash.
You sure?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, I've got a couple of things here. So council member Overman and I had the pleasure to go to the MASK Annual Conference just this past month. Heather might have a couple of things to add, but overall, MASK puts on a great conference every year, and this conference certainly was great, and glad we had the opportunity to attend. A couple of things that I wanted just to share, we had the opportunity to learn some valuable...
valuable information regarding the Ethics Act and campaign filing. So for those of you who are interested and are running for elected office this year, the state ethics office has a lot of really great information online, so I encourage you to go on and check it out. They're also a great resource, if you have any questions, please give them a call, they're more than happy to walk you through it, and it's better to, to do it sooner rather than later, because even if you're just running for office, you still have some obligations to fill out some forms. So if I can help you out with anything, it's understand what, what those requirements are and do them. Also, another good session on marketing your city and making it a place where people feel proud to live and really have a sense of ownership. So I know Councilmember Overman and I have talked about a couple of things around that to take away and hopefully bring back to help, help everyone feel even more proud to live here in TK. Another session on communication strategy for managing through crisis, hopefully we won't have to utilize any of those tips that they gave us, but certainly good information to have. And then lastly, the last item I wanted to mention was the South Carolina Business License Act that has to be implemented by January 2022. And then I just wanted to, to check in on that, make sure that we're all good.
Full steam ahead. Yep. Sinek Brothers and Shontae Polite have been working very diligently on it, and we are waiting on stuff to come back to us at this point.
Perfect.
So we can take next steps.
Awesome. So if you do own a, a business in TK, that might be something that you want to put on your radar to, to look for once the city starts communicating about that, because there will be changes forthcoming, or there are. Big thanks to Charlie and staff, I know a lot of effort went into this, this budget, especially from council as well. So Councilmember Overman, Mayor Protem, thank you guys for, for all your collaboration and work on putting recommendations forward and having good conversation. Let's see, I'll give a shout-out to Parks and Rec as well, Joey, thank you and your staff, I know there's been a lot of work the past couple of weeks to get this season kicked off. Had my draft this Saturday, everything, everything went well. It's a lot of work and there's a lot of coordination behind the scenes that goes on, so really appreciate all of your guys' work, and especially with the storm cleanup and all that, prepping the field, so with that, I'll, I'll let it rest. Thank you, guys.
Phew.
Cut off.
Can I have a hook? Councilman Ryan Richard, do you have anything?
Absolutely, I'll be honored to be a councilman for this great city. Kudos to Charlie and staff for doing a great job with the budget, as well as the storm and cleanup this weekend. Not in town, but heard great things about the efforts. And as always, nothing but kudos and thanks to our police, our fire and our first responders, you guys do an amazing job, so keep it up, that's all I have, guys, thanks.
Thank you. Heather?
Yeah, I just, kind of backtracking, when you go last, this is what happened, so. Back to school kind of went off without a hitch, so hopefully everybody stays healthy, stays safe, and we have a wonderful year, and everybody stays in school. Fall sports, Joey, your team has done an excellent job, we are really looking forward to flag football today, unfortunately, didn't happen, but that's okay, we'll roll it into next year, and maybe, maybe someday, we won't have to like have rainouts, maybe. An awesome job to all the staff, to Charlie on the budget, you guys did a great job, really looking forward to next fiscal year. That's it.
All right, what they said, plus, once again, I would like to thank all of staff, you know, Saturday when the, the microburst came through here, I mean, there were parts of town that got hammered and parts of town that didn't, everybody got rained, but so many people, you know, left their homes and their families to come out and, and help, and our fire and PD outstanding job always, like they always do. Even tonight, a neighbor called me and said, there's a tree blocking damn road, what do I do? I said, call police, non-emergency, and I said, let me know how it works out, and he said, about three minutes later, there were four firemen out there cutting the tree up with chainsaws. So thank you for all you do for the city, it's one of the reasons this place is so special. The ski team, another reason why this city's so special. What, what city has their own ski team? You know, we do free entertainment 11 weeks out of the year, and that's just amazing. Along with the storm too, was the effort of the, the neighbors. One of the things that makes TK great is, is all the people here. And, you know, some people can get out, some people have chainsaws, some people don't, but, you know, everybody pitched in and helped, you know, whether it be cutting up limbs, removing debris, doing all those kind of things, and we, we appreciate that. And lastly, just in case, I know, I got a flag that got shredded, and there are boxes donated by the Veterans Association, there's one right outside in the hallway here, and one at Fire Station 1, Station 1 on Stonecrest. If you had a flag that's been damaged, and, you know, please dispose of it properly, and this will be done the right way if you deposit them in those boxes, don't throw them away, just don't. So that's all I have. It is, that ends this portion of the meeting. I'd like a motion for, to move to executive session.
Motion to go into executive, executive session.
It was seconded by Ryan Richard. We are now in executive session. Okay, I need a motion to table Item 10A, discussing executive session.
Mayor Protem and members of council, I'd like to make a motion to table 10A.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's unanimous. One quick thing, I do want to amend my council comments. Mr. Leonard, if you would, I would like to see or direct the Planning Commission, if I could, to review the appropriate sections of the zoning codes regarding kitchens on multiple floors. Provided that it's not going to be a separate living quarters, not an attached garage, if something's easier to rent out, I'd like to, to look at that zoning code and/or ordinance to allow someone to have a second stove without calling it a secondary residence.
Accessory dwelling.
Am I making sense?
Second.
That one didn't need to be seconded, but thank you, Ryan. But if you could do that, I would greatly appreciate it.
I think we've already anticipated that, to break that up there.
Yeah.
I thought so, thank you.
That's the accessory dwellings.
Yep, yep, thank you very much. Okay, that being said, anyone have anything else? Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.